Yesterday, we celebrated the 16th anniversary of the 9/11 event. What happened on 9/11 was uncalled for and unasked for. And was a tragedy in every marking of the word tragedy. But on 9/12, today's anniversary, we all came together as a country with a whole lot more love for each other, a whole lot more respect for each other, and a whole lot more tolerance for each other. As bad as that tragedy was, that one tragedy brought us all together in a more perfect It's the 9/12 that we should be focusing on now. Hopefully, we can all live better and be more respectful and more tolerant and more understanding with the 9/12 mentality. Let's keep those who've lost their lives in 9/11 in our thoughts and prayers. And hopefully, we can move forward in a positive direction. Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Case of an emergency or a fire, our emergency exits are located to the rear of the chamber, also down the stairs out to the left and out to the parking lot. Can I have roll call, yeah, can I have roll call Kathy, please?
Mr. Benye?
Here.
Mrs. Riley?
Here.
Mrs. Ungeyer?
Here.
Mr. Cruzell?
Here.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Here.
Mr. Neville?
Here.
Mrs. Thurston?
Here.
Mr. Grady? Chairman Serrard?
Here. Be it noted that Mr. Grady could not get out of work tonight. Board of guests.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We do have some very special guests tonight. Tonight, we welcome Enfield High School Principal Aaron Clark, teachers Armando Ramos and Joanne Cardell, as well as several Enfield High School students. They are here to discuss the Enfield Unified Sports Program. And High School, I'm going to give it away now, has been recognized as an official Special Olympics National Banner Champion School. So, we want to congratulate them on this prestigious recognition and invited them as board guests tonight to explain a little bit more about the program. So, I'll turn it over to Ms. Clark or Mr. Ramos.
Mr. Ramos.
All right. Thank you. Okay. All right, it's already on?
Yes.
Thank you so much for inviting us. We're so proud of the Unified Program. It's come a long way, and these kids have been working so hard, so it's really nice for you guys to invite us. I want to talk a little bit about the program and how, what we've done last year. Last year was an amazing year. Couple of quick highlights. We participated in soccer, basketball, volleyball, track and field tournaments and games. We hosted several basketball games and pizza parties. We attended the Unified Leadership Summit. We held an "End the R Word" pledge with more than 900 student signatures. We attended the Michaels Cup banquet at the AquaTurf, where Emily Hickton, Gabby Burns were both recognized for their excellence and unified values. Lastly, we hosted a Special Olympic Track and Field Night for the Enfield Allied Stars Special Olympic Team, and that was a really special night. And I have a quick little slideshow, so you can kind of see firsthand for yourselves. This is that, this is the Track and Field Night against the Enfield Allied Stars. They're in blue, we're in green behind them. That was lining up for the relays. This is Gabby with her shot put. We made the paper. That was pretty exciting. So, that was the Enfield press. This is our "End the R Word" pledge. We had the principal's administration, one of the first people to sign it. It was pretty exciting. And that's the team. We all got shirts and made posters and made announcements throughout the school. It was a nice little event for us. And that's just a tournament that we went to in Glastonbury, where we were champions. This is a basketball tournament, game that we hosted at home. We had a great little pizza party afterwards, a lot of fun. That's John playing great defense. And that is the Unified Torch, Special Olympic Torch that we, that we use at the beginning of each ceremony, shaking hands, showing sportsmanship. Those are our medals, our hardware that we won that day. We're very proud of that. And that's our banner and our, our team after the championships. So, I'd like to call up Taylor, Taylor Giglione, Emily Hickton, Gabby Burns, John Silvestri, Brittany Wagner, come on up. Come on up, guys. Do you want to go first? That's as far as it goes.
Good evening. My name is Brittany, and I am a part of the Enfield High School Unified Sports. I would like to tell you a little, little about Unified Sports. It is a program that works with the Special Olympics and anyone with disabilities. This program is for individuals to feel more confident and not be discriminated against. It's to help with feeling better about themselves and not feel unwanted. This program also has individuals to help out and partner up to help support any individual who may need assistance. I have been in Unified for two years, and as a senior, I am going into my third year. When I first joined, I was nervous and did not want to speak up for myself. But now, I have more confidence and I am more willing to participate and give more effort for my team. Some of the activities that I have been a part of were basketball, soccer, volleyball, and track. Now, this year, we are going to get to play flag football. I love them all, but I think basketball was my favorite. Before every game, one of the partners and one of the Unified Team players goes up and says, "Let me win, but if I cannot win, let me be brave in the attempt." And after we play the National Anthem and the games begin. So, knowing that I am a part of Unified Sports and what it represents, I am proud to be a part of it and hope that this program will continue for years to come, so other individuals will have a chance to experience the program just like I was able to. Brittany kind of said what I was going to say. Brittany stole my thunder. But I guess I'll read mine anyways. Hold on. Unified Sports is a great way for each and every one of us to get together as a community, a team, and even a family. The bonds that are formed during Unified are unbreakable. You form these connections with everyone you've never thought you would, you would have. The memories that we all share together will never be forgotten. A memory that I know that will always stick with me and even my teammates is the beginning of each tournament, we walk out as a team, just like the Olympics and our school name is announced. We then stand together with all the other teams and we say this quote, "Let me win. If I cannot win, let me be brave in the attack." This is a very strong quote, because in Unified, it's all about trying, having fun, and being confident. After we say the quote, we then light a torch to begin the games. It's a great experience to be a part of. Unified Sports is not just experience, Unified Sports is not just a class that people get credit for. It is a team for others who aren't able to join and for ones who can participate on other teams. This is just another team for them. They take it just as serious as other teams, team sports they play. I've learned that not everything is about winning, because me personally, I always want to win. I am super competitive, but since Unified, I've realized that as long as you're having fun, trying your best, and encouraging each other, that's all that matters.
It's hard to follow those two. So, back in June, we were nominated by the C I A C for the Special Olympic National Banner School. And it was kind of a, kind of a little daunting. It was something that was intimidating, because it was pretty extensive. There was about 10, actually 10 standards, and as we started to go through them, that just by doing what we do, we, and the school itself in other ways, was, was really, we were able to accomplish everything. And it was really a team, it was a school-wide award, because a lot of the things that, a lot of the standards were accomplished by, by the administration's support or other, other branches such as, you know, team leadership. So, we were, we were, we were really fortunate that a lot of people helped us out to get the award. So, another thing that I, that I think is really important, and again, it's kind of a school-wide, town-wide award, is because we have such support here in Enfield. Case in point, we are able to build the practice into the school day, and that's an advantage that a lot of programs don't have. And what's great about that is that it allows athletes to easy, have easy access. They don't have to worry about getting a different bus home or staying after. It's built into the day. And the other great thing is it allows kids that are great leaders, that are involved with varsity sports, to be on the team. Otherwise, they'd probably be in their varsity practices or games and not be able to do that. So, to be able to do it during the school is really a wonderful thing, and that's a credit to the support that, that you've given us for allowing that. So, thank you very much. So, lastly, too, I, I could be here all night to thank so many people, but one in particular really stands out, and that's Marilyn Crissati. She recruited me to do this, and it's been the greatest thing that I've ever done as a teacher. So, I really want to thank her, because without her support and her, I, I don't think, you know, I wouldn't have done it, and I would have missed out. So, I really want to thank her for that opportunity. Thank you.
First of all, thank you, folks, for coming. It's, I mean, it touches us as much as it touches you. I think you all represent this district fantastically, and we couldn't be prouder of you for how you represent it. That all of you take part, that you, how serious you take it, even the fact you become emotional when you talk about how, how much you care about this, that says a lot to all of us. So, I just, you know, you guys have been doing this for a while. Actually, I'm old enough to have been around when Carl Olin got this hooked up with the cast and C I A C and stuff like that years and years ago, and has done nothing but grow. And people like Marilyn, Bob Crissati, and all of those folks have done a great job of supporting you. And if you're worried about it, the young lady who was up first, that people, us not supporting them, we will always support you. I think I speak for the entire board here. So, thank you. Thank you for coming here. We appreciate it. Thank you very much.
I also just want to echo Tim's remarks as well and say kudos to you guys. That's awesome. The fact that you can go out there and put together such a Unified Team, not just in name, but, I mean, actions as well. I mean, you all came up here smiling and bubbling, and you sit there as a Unified Team. And, you know, I, it's just amazing what you guys have done and continue to do, and I can't wait to see what this year holds for you all.
I just wanted to comment, when Mr. Ramos was up here talking, not all of us are lucky enough to have a job where you're going to be deeply affected by an experience in such a good way. And that makes me proud as a board member and as a parent in the town of Enfield and as a resident, because it just shows how powerful that this Unified Sports Program has become. And like Rich said, the kids, you can tell that they enjoy it. I am just proud that this program has had the effect on the students as well as the coaches and teachers. And good luck to you guys this season in all your sports. I'll keep an eye out for when you guys have some games, and I'm going to try to get there this year. So, thank you.
I just wanted us to say that, I also want to thank Joanne Cardell. She, she's a special, special teacher, not just a special ed teacher. And I think without her, you know, I don't think the program would be where it is either, because she, she really does a great job with the kids. She, she helps me reach out to them, and I lean on her a lot. So, I want to just make sure that she gets the credit, because she's wonderful.
I have to say, I remember when Mr. Olin put that together, and I was actually part of that, and Susan St. James was there. And just the effect there that started it, I mean, was just incredible. So, we're so proud of you guys. And I have to, and I have to second what you just said. I had the privilege of working with Ms. Cardell for, I think, was it a year? I think just a year. And her students are extremely lucky. I mean, they, they become, I mean, that's her world. I mean, she just absolutely adores her children, and they're very lucky to have her in their lives. So, congratulations.
Just wanted to say congratulations and thank you for coming and giving that great slideshow. And you have a lot of talent there. Some of those things we can't do. So, you did a good job. Also, congratulations on your C I A C nomination. That's great. Thanks for coming.
Like everybody else, I just wanted to say congratulations. And I think that it's a really great opportunity that you guys got to build a practice into the school day, so that other athletes can come also. I think that's great. You guys are doing a great thing. Keep up the awesome work. Thank you very much.
Okay, I'm the last guy, so we're good. When we have champions like you come before us, and you guys truly are champions, it always reflects well on our town and our school system and the people that live here, because you guys exemplify what it means to live in Enfield. You put your best foot forward, and you come out on top. And I cannot tell you how eminently proud I am of you and your accomplishments. When you have faith in people, and you put the resources at their, at their availability, and you know how well they can achieve, I've never doubted that people in Enfield can achieve great things, and you guys show that. So, you have every reason to be proud, and we have every reason to be proud of you. So, congratulations to all of you.
I won't make Mr. Ramos come back up, but the one thing didn't mention, that I actually received the official banner at a ceremony at C I A C on December 15th. So, I'm, we will keep you updated, and he's been charged to take a lot of pictures, or Mr. Longley and I are going to crash it. So, we'll keep you up to date as we go.
Can you, can we have them bring that banner here after they receive it?
I also had the pleasure of telling Mr. Ramos on the way up this morning that work travels fast in Enfield, and there's an open invitation for them to come in front of the Town Council as well. So, with any luck, we'll be seeing a lot of these guys in the coming months.
Just bring them to the board first, okay?
Notice they were our first guests in the, in the school year here.
Thank you, Mr. Dreszek. Thank you, guys. Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll start with our student representatives. Want to welcome our 2017, 18 student representatives. Students received their in-service yesterday during Eagle Hour, so they are all prepared to assume their roles. Congratulations to, to assume their roles at board student reps. Three of them are here, so I would turn it over to, their information is in your packet. But, Mr. Chairman, if you choose to, I've also made them a promise that they will continue to go first during the superintendent's report, because I know someone has an AP class they have to prepare for tomorrow. And our new, you got, and I failed to mention your familiar face, Megan Connery is returning, and our new junior rep is Matt Campo, and our alternates are going to be Sarah Passmore as a senior, and Jacqueline, I'm not going to, I don't want to mispronounce your name again, Dino. Did I get it? But she's in the audience tonight. I'm going to take some liberties and ask if Megan can go first, because she's the one who reached out that said she had an AP class to prepare for tomorrow. Sorry, Matt.
The floor is yours.
So, the senior class, we'd like to thank the board for continuing to let the seniors leave during Eagle Hour. It's very helpful. We all love it so much. The school year has also been off to a great start. We have a lot of AP classes, as you know, all the seniors are taking. I think the average we're all taking are like three, maybe? So, we're trying to strive for all fours on the test or fives. And then, the football team had their first game last Friday, and they have another one this coming Friday at 7:00. And then, homecoming week is actually approaching very fast, and there will be a football game on the 6th of October. And Spirit Week is going to be the second to the seventh, so everyone's very excited for that.
Matt?
I'd like to first talk a little bit about the music department. The band has been hard at work preparing for their first competition on October 7th in Cheshire. And the Tri-A Music Honor Society has chosen new members for this year, and our first meeting is later this week. So, we'll be starting things off for this year. And the girls' field hockey team traveled to Maine to compete. I have not yet gotten word on how they did, but a big congratulations to them. Oh, and freshman orientation was a big success on Monday, August 28th, with the help of a lot of our student leaders around the school. And we had a guest motivational speaker, Eric Jackson, and all the administration helped out a lot, and the freshmen, I hope, feel pretty comfortable. That's all for me.
Before we move on to the next section, Matt, Megan, welcome. We always treat you as a, as a full member of the board without voting privileges, of course. You can make it to what you want it to be. We hope, we look forward to you stepping forward and continuing to service you and your alternates. And it's always a pleasure to have you here. So, you guys did a great job tonight. Mr. Dreszek?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next item is an update on the Career Technical Education Secondary Supplemental Enhancement Grant update. If you recall, the last meeting, the board approved a grant application for Mr. Dig for supplemental enhancements to our advanced manufacturing, programming, and machining equipment. Just want to give you an update that I'm pleased to announce shortly after the grant was submitted. We were notified that we were approved. Mr. Dig has secured a $100,000 grant to enhance our STEAM and Technology Education Program. So, hopefully, the turnaround on grants are as quick as this one was, but I wanted to make sure the board was aware. Next update is on Family Day. Enfield and towns across Connecticut will celebrate Family Day on Sunday, the 17th. We obviously encourage everyone to be part of that. It's to be held on the Enfield Town Green, starting at 11:00 a.m., and your information in the flyer is in your packets. Enfield is, we're also continuing the Rachel's Challenge Program. On Wednesday, September 20th, Enfield High School is going to hold a Rachel's Challenge Community Event in the auditorium at 6:00 p.m. If you haven't had an opportunity to attend one of these events, I know a lot of you have. It's a very powerful, powerful event, both for students and for families, so I would also encourage most of you to attend if you can. The information is also included in your packet. Lastly, there's a list of the September school events. It's also in your packet. I won't read them all, because it's the beginning of the school year, so there's obviously a lot going on. And there's a couple of things that aren't listed on the agenda for this evening that I wanted to make the board aware of. First is we were, I was given some information, thanks to Senator Kissel's office, that I'm going to pass out right now. I'm going to ask Matt if he can pass these down. I received this last week from Senator Kissel's office with regards to the budget, the governor's most up-to-date budget proposal. And again, this isn't a set budget, this isn't the budget executive order. This was last week's announcement, when the budget, when the governor had made some adjustments to his budget proposal. If you scroll to page 2, the second line down, this is a town-by-town. This just gives a snapshot of what the initial request from the governor's initial proposed budget were and what his modifications were in the latest round. In a nutshell, essentially, the pension contribution that the governor initially proposed would have been about a $4.2 million expense turned back on the town of Enfield. To the best of my knowledge and speaking with, with colleagues and folks at the state, the governor's most recent proposal would essentially cut that in half over the next two fiscal years. So, in lieu of 4.2 million in fiscal year 18, and then another 4.3 in fiscal year 19, that would be now reduced to 1.9 in fiscal year 18 and 1.9 million in fiscal year 19. My understanding is that there was an alternative budget presented today. I don't have the details on that at the moment. I was notified that they were proposing it. As soon as I get any further information, I'll certainly pass it along to the board. But I would like to thank Senator Kissel for making this available as soon as the governor released it. A lot of times, the board will hear from me when I don't always have great news. Kath, would you mind putting the screen again? And I think it's important to share with you guys good news. So, if you bear with me, this is the magic of Mr. Barassa. Try to get it to work. If it doesn't work, it's my fault, not his. But about, a little over two weeks ago, a lot of you are familiar with Ms. Lori Gates, who runs the Read Across America Program and does a lot supporting military families and first responders. She reached out to me because there's a program for, as Mr. Serrard mentioned in the invocation, yesterday was September 11th. It was the 16th anniversary of the horrible day that will forever live. One of the things she reached out to me was that she likes to, she, in years past, she started a campaign for schoolchildren, members of the community, to essentially write notes and cards to first responders in Enfield. One of the challenges this year was that our teachers and our students didn't return until Tuesday, and the cutoff date for her to pick all up, all the material up was on Friday afternoon. She reached out to me Friday while she was still driving around town from, from building to building to let me know that she already had five binders worth of material, and she couldn't believe the response. I do want to say that the effort on our part was merely just letting our principals know and asking our teachers that we knew it was short notice, but this wasn't a question of, "We're directing you to do this." This is a question of, "Can we help?" I can't take any, Andy and I can't take any credit for what they were able to accomplish with this, other than getting the word out to see if this was something they could step up and try to help and make recognition for those who really truly deserve it, which are the first responders here in Enfield. Lori reached out to me yesterday and told me that between, and we can't take full credit for, though we are the largest organization she reached out to, but she also reached out to some daycares in town, some town facilities. She presented 933 cards and letters to first responders here in Enfield. So, what I've asked, if we can get this to work, how do you refresh this thing? Oh, he told me. Why am I losing the signal? I know. Okay. Okay. So, I don't think so. He's probably calling me right now to tell me what I'm doing wrong, but let's see if I can get it to just play. Okay, I'll make sure I send this all to you in the essence of time. But these are just photographs that Lori had sent over to me, just to, not just in appreciation for the sheer volume of the amount of materials that she was able to present at the 9/11 walk last night. But she also enclosed a letter, which I'll send on to the board. The letter was going to be up tonight, but I'll, I'll put it in a board memo to you guys tomorrow. Not just thanking us for coming together and putting together such a large amount of materials, but really thanking the kids for understanding how important these, these folks are in our lives. And in one of the letters that she quotes, it was, "I don't know the age of the student." And these were just elementary and junior high kids who wrote the letters and the cards, reminding that they understand that these are the people who put their lives on the line for us, and it's the least that we can do to help out. So, I wanted to, at least give you an opportunity to see some of the material that was sent. I'll try to get that out to you as soon as I can. And I screwed this up when it comes to the technology, so I'll never live it down with Mr. Barassa. Two quick, other quick things that I have that are not on my list for the evening. I've gotten a lot of questions, not only from board members, but from, from some parents with regards to power. So, I'd like to give you just a quick update on where we are when it comes to the power school transition. The most important aspect of converting to a new program is getting the student data information rolled over, and we weren't able to do that until July 1st. The second most important piece of that is making sure that our teachers are live in the database with not only attendance records, student data records, medical records, things along those lines. One of the questions that we receive a lot is, "When is the parent porthole, which is the equivalent to hack, going to be up and running?" We haven't turned on the parent porthole as of yet, and that's been done intentionally. The reason for that is, we are about 95 percent, and mind you, teachers have only been back for a week with, with students. We are at 95 percent completion rate for a process like this, is getting all of our teachers up to speed. We are aware of the 5 percent, that there are still some glitches. You all know how technology works. I don't want to give you a drop-dead date when it will be fixed, but I can assure you it will be fixed in the, in the coming days. Once that process is completed, we'll be in a better position to turn on the parent porthole. The reason for that is that if we were to turn it on now, and as a parent, we want to protect frustration from parents and importantly, from staff members. If we turn it on, and you have a son or daughter, and five of your son or daughter's teachers are on there, and you happen to have one teacher that there's glitches in it, it's going to give the appearance that your teacher is not updating their information, be it daily, weekly, whatever. daily, weekly, whatever. In turn, that first phone call that parent is going to make is going to be to that teacher to say, "Why aren't you updating my kid's grade? Why do I have a zero?" We're trying to avoid that for teachers and for parents, to not have that confusion. Once we are 100 percent, which I'm being told we are extremely close, we will get that information out to parents with reminders, how to log in. All of that stuff is in the queue, ready to go, ready to be sent with school messenger alerts. It's just a matter of us being comfortable enough to say we're ready to go. So I do know you guys receive a lot of questions of when that's going to be available. We're aware, the reason that we purposely didn't turn it on yet is for how I explained to you earlier. All of the courses, all of the medical codes, all of the attendance, all of that is set up in the system. The system is up and running and functioning internally. I've gotten some questions with regards to transcripts, I've gotten questions regards to IEPs. We are still running a dual platform, and for the short foreseeable future, we will continue to do that, because our information was in eSchool. All the information's been transferred, but we're still able to keep eSchool on, so we don't lose anything. If a student has a transfer, a transcript request, all of our transcripts are, were PDFed, housed electronically, and all of our guidance counselors, teachers, and administrators have access to them. As you know with a transcript, there shouldn't be any transcript changes from June of last year until today. So if a student needs a transcript from last June, it's readily available through either a guidance counselor, a teacher, or an administrator. If they're having issues with that, we've directed everyone to call down to our office to find out. Obviously, any transcript that's created or changed from September 5th on, that will be, all be produced in eSchool. That is up and running, it just hasn't been released yet because the first semester, first marking period hasn't concluded. So any questions regarding transcripts, there, we're in a good place with that. We haven't advertised the whole process yet because we haven't turned all of the buttons on yet. There's also been some questions with regards to students' IEPs. Same scenario. If a student had an IEP and there was no changes made to it, we use the system called IEP Plus, that has all been housed and warehoused electronically with access for our special education teachers and administrators to get at. In the event they need to get to an existing one, it's a matter of going on electronically, downloading it down. Any changes or any new IEPs from this school year on will all be generated in the IEP function within Power School. That process is continuously ongoing. The, like I said, the parent porthole, I know we've gotten a lot of questions on that. We're hopeful that in the coming days, week, we'll be able to put out a school messenger that is now up and running with instructions, with guidance back to our website. I know that some of the schools, I know Ms. Clark had a brief inter, at freshman orientation, did an overview on Power School. We're going to continue to do as much outreach as we can. What I can tell you, what the finished product is, with folks in this community are used to eSchool, and they're used to eSchool on their phones, and they're used to eSchool online, on their computers, when the whole process is complete, I can assure you that everyone who has an interest in this topic will be extremely satisfied with the product and the end result. I can speak from that personally, that there is functions within Power School that, as a parent, you can get notifications for anything you'd like. I know that because my wife texts me four times a day freaking out that my daughter didn't hand in an assignment, or she was late for class, because my kids have it. So it is a much stronger, more powerful vehicle for a student information system. It's just what people tend to real, not realize at times, is that a transition from July 1 till today, with unfortunately not having an army of staff to do it, we're actually on a better pace to be completely integrated, per the folks at Power School when we first sat down with them. And all of that is because of the hard work and dedication, really, of three people. Guy Barassa, Dr. Kerry Wiley, and Fred Lacyak. When we transferred from Penimation to eSchool years ago, we had a team of about 12 to 15 people who all chipped in. This is not their job. This is in addition to their job. These three individuals canceled vacations over the summertime to make sure we were up and running on day one. We sat down with Penimation, oh, with Penimation, sorry, Freudian slip, with e, with Power School last spring to look at the transition plan. We are on target for what they, they said. Could we have sped the process up a little bit? That would have been an exorbitant amount of resources to outsource people to come in to do it. Our folks took it on themselves. And the other issue that we hear sometimes is that, you know, the parent piece isn't up and running yet. That was by design, not that we didn't want to keep information from parents, but we knew if we had to keep it down for a short period of time, the best week to do is the first week of school, because there isn't a lot going in the first week of school. So we're hoping that once grades start formulating and attendance starts formulating, we'll be able to get parents up and running on it. If anyone has any additional questions on Power School, I'd be happy to answer them. I'm trying to hit all the things that I've heard that have reached, that have reached my office. If I did forget something, I apologize, I'll send you another quick update like I did two weeks ago after the board meeting, but I always wanted to get that out. For anyone listening at home, we're very close to getting it up and running. These folks are doing a tremendous job trying to help us get it up there. It's coming, and when it does come, ultimately come to fruition, I think everyone's going to be thrilled with it. I know there's no comments or questions. I also forgot to mention that in my superintendent's report, that we had a wonderful first day of school opening. I had that listed on my, on my first thing to talk to you guys about. Outside of the traditional hiccups that we always have, I can't say that we could have asked or envisioned a first day of school opening with all the changes and all the transitions going any smoother than they did. So I thank you for that, you guys putting the, the structure in place to allow us to be successful. And the, the proof of that, which you'll ultimately see if you had a chance to see Mr. Barassa's first day of school video, is I didn't see one kid crying, and every kid I walked through at every level was smiling. So to me, that's, that's the important thing, on knowing that we had a successful first day. I see a question before I get to the last point.
Just a question through the chair to Mr. Dreszek. So if a transcript is needed for early decision, because sometimes those transcripts have to be in like mid-September for the kids that want early decision, as long as they're not looking for anything for the first quarter, the June transcripts are PDFed, and there should be, we can have those emailed to the admissions department at the schools as directed by the parents, or?
Am I okay, Dan? Yes. There, the, the transcripts are in the same format as they would have been in eSchool, and they actually back them up in additional time to make sure nothing was lost in the transfer. So if a student needs a transcript, contact their guidance counselor, they have access to get them, the same manner that they would at any other time. And any changes from this point forward, obviously, will be generated, a new transcript within Power.
Right, but there's, there's either misinformation or a misunderstanding that they thought they would have to wait for these transcripts to go out, but that in fact is not, that's not correct. There's a way to get these transcripts out.
I've got a letter in front of me that states that is not correct.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Nubl.
I appreciate the update. I think we all had questions in our board comments, so I appreciate you doing that. In terms of future updates, because I think parents are looking to see, what does it look like? Just like we did the stuff with Hack when we brought that stuff up. When they get ready to flip the switch there, and I'm hoping that it may be contemporaneous with our next meeting or something like that, well, whenever it happens, can we have Mr. Barassa and a principal from each of the levels to, to present something here? If it's not ready then, then at another meeting. But I, just so that, because it goes out here, a lot of people watch this, and I think it would get the message out, they could see it on the big screen and stuff like that, and I think that would be helpful, so. Now, through the chair, if we can get that done, and when it's ready, you can schedule it on the agenda. Any problems with getting that going?
We're going to try to market the implementation of this the best we can. We know that parents have anxiety over it, especially since they had a tool they were used to using, and now all of a sudden, that tool is no longer there. We're aware, and I can, I can assure you that plans are already in place for the rollout of that. It's just a matter of, we don't want to put anything, get ahead of ourselves too much, because until we can actually hit the button and go live, it's just going to create, create more confusion.
I'm really just trying to save some additional phone calls and questions, if they know it's coming.
Appreciate it.
And we're going to do it here on TV, and if they want to come and raise a question or two, that's fine, but I just, I think that would be, would help everybody out.
Ms. LeBlanc.
Yeah, just as a comment, I think people were thinking they missed something, that it was up and running, and that, that their kids didn't give them the, that it was up and running.
It's the letter.
So, yeah, so they were just kind of saying, you know, is it up and running? Did I miss something? Have I missed something? So the more information I'm available to give out, the happier I am, and, and I see parents, a lot of us see a lot of parents, so, thank you.
Superintendent's report?
I've got one more thing for you, and I was hopeful, hoping this would be a visual as well, so I'll, I'll include this in a follow-up. I know, I swear, I'm not talking this much going forward, but it's the first, it's the first meeting that we're back with, when kids are back, so you're going to have to bear with me.
Do you have to give them a plug?
No, Andy's part of it. Andy's, Andy's as guilty as this one as I am. One of the things, speaking of Andy, that, that we talked about over the summer and all our free time between moving and moving buildings around, was what message did we want to have for faculty and staff when they returned? And that was something that was very important for us as our first time out, particularly when, when teachers and administrators return. What did we want to say? And what direction were we going to go this, this year, and, and what vision were we going to set moving the district forward? And we struggled a bit with, we, what we've learned is that us as a, as a profession, we tend to make things a little bit more complicated sometimes than they need to be. And we kept coming back to the same question amongst ourselves, was why are we doing this? What are we here for? So over the summer, we had our first administrative council meeting, I asked them a simple question. I said, "Why are you here?" And, yeah, I didn't know what to expect, I didn't know the response that I was going to get, but what I tried to get out of that meeting was something that our administrators can, and this wasn't directed just toward the administration, but I wanted something tangible that they can walk out of to say, "This is why I'm doing this." Everybody can go back in their own personal story and remember why they're here. No one got into this business to be rich. People got into this business for a reason. So we came up with a pretty simple slogan after much debate, but I couldn't stop there. It couldn't be a directive from Andy and I to say, "This is what we believe in, and we're going to put it out there." So I shared with the administrators that I was going to pose the same question at convocation to the entire faculty and staff. But I would use where we started as a, as a starting point, and I really wanted to hear feedback from everyone that was involved. So I put it up on the screen, and I asked everybody at convocation the same question. "Why are you here? Why do you want it? What do you believe in?" And the statement that we came out of administrative council that I shared at convocation was, was pretty simple, and it's, "We make a difference in Enfield, every child, every day." And I asked two things at convocation. I asked teachers and administrators and all faculty members, whether you're a clerical staff member, paraprofessional, whomever, everyone who was in the room, "Why are you doing this? What makes you tick? Why do you do this every day when you come into work?" And more importantly, you need to remember that at times. Not today, not a week from now, but when things get tough, go back and walk out of this room and remember why you're sitting here. And the other thing I asked them to do is I wanted their feedback, because if we're going to put our name on this, I want everybody to be invested in it. And Andy and I kind of had a side bet, and I said I was going to email it out to everyone in the district and try to get some, some feedback from folks to see what they thought. We had an over-under at about 50, figuring 50 people would respond. I can tell you that as of today, I've gotten over 260 responses. All 260 responses I've gotten, there has not been one negative comment. And that's not a testament to us, that's a testament to what people, what people think. I've gotten four that have asked for some minor tweaks, adding a word, taking the exclamation point off, which is all good, but I, I shared with the, with the, with the staff at convocation that I'm not married to this. If we got it right, I want to know. If it's not right, I want, we can change it. This is an open dialogue. The important piece is, what I want everyone to walk away from was, is this something you can put your name on? When someone asks what you do for a living, I don't want to know what you do, I want to know why you do it. And the statement, to me, rung true with one word in there, and that word is difference, because difference can mean a lot of things to a lot of different people. It's not just, "I helped the kid academically, I helped somebody with their grades, or I was their coach." A difference could be as simple as what you saw this evening with the Unified Sports Program. A difference can be, you know, a kid can't, doesn't have any money to go on a field trip, so the teacher doesn't tell anybody and puts the money in the envelope for the kid. Nobody sees it, they don't want a pat on the back, but they do it. So as we're going through this process, I bring it to you for two reasons. One is, I'm not asking your permission, I'm not asking you to approve anything. The board has their own vision, they have their own goals, this is really something that comes from the district. It would be a lot better if I had it up on the screen. But I brought it to you for two reasons. One is, I think, A, as you saw tonight, that's just a small portion, we have a lot of great people that work here for us, and you need to know that as a board. You also have a, have a right to know, I believe, what your people believe in. And of 260 responses, and it wasn't a survey, it was a simple email, for people to get on board saying, "I can put my name on this." And, and the most important thing to me was, I also got an opportunity to hear people's stories on why they got into, to do this in the first place. You need to know that. You need to know what your people believe in, and why your people do this every day. The second part that I wanted to mention tonight, because not just to bring you up to speed on what we're doing in the district, but to ask you the same question. Why are you all here? You don't have to answer me. I know the answer. I think at times, we all need a reminder of what we do. I know you're not here for the money. As a newsflash, they don't cut you a check when your term expires. To be honest, you are all volunteers. All of you essentially give an unlimited amount of your personal time with your families to walk away with a good parking spot at graduation. That's what you tangibly take away from this experience. So I know what you do. You all know what you do, but as times get tough, and they will, and they will continue, you have a budget document in your hand, there are times where we all need to take a step aside and remind ourselves what we do this for. So I wanted to at least bring you up to speed on where we were from a district and, and what the belief system is. It's turned into almost a motto or a slogan. I've had requests to make T-shirts and bumper stickers, so we'll see where we go with it. I don't want you guys to see it around town and realize, "What are those two up to now?" But more, but more importantly, I, I wanted you to know what your people believe in, and recognize for you as well, that you guys didn't sign up for this because there's glory or there's fame in it. You signed up for this because you wanted to help kids, and, and don't lose that. And I'm not, it's not my job to preach and tell you what to do, but it's a reminder for all of us on, on why we're here. So with that said, I will welcome your feedback. I don't need it now, I'm not asking for it now. You all know how to get ahold of me. If you like it, let me know. If you don't, you've never been shy before to tell me you didn't like something, so feel free. But I at least wanted to pose that as, as sort of the first official meeting of the year to let you know where we stood. So that, Mr. Chairman, concludes my superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Dreszek, and you're right, that's probably one of the longest superintendent's reports we've ever forgotten.
That will be the last.
In 20 years. No, anyway. Audiences, do we have anyone? Board member comments? Ms. LeBlanc.
Okay. I just wanted to say that I heard some positive things, experienced some positive things now that the kids are back to school. I went to the Enfield High Sports Night. There's a lot of energy, different kind of energy, it was really great to see. I was at the football game on Friday night along with, I think, everybody else in the town of Enfield. It was really crowded, but it was great to see everybody. Somebody asked me, "Is it going to be this crowded every time they have a home game?" I said, "When it's 25 degrees and raining, no. It'll be just the parents under their umbrellas." But I have to say, last year being in the new conference with the football team, this year, their, their home opener was against Manchester, and they are a powerhouse team. And I always say, that score does not reflect how well this team, the amount of heart this team has, and they played so well Friday night. I, I'm just so proud of these, these boys, because it's, it's not easy in this conference that they're in right now. So that was good. Again, with Mr. Ramos, like I almost am a little bit envious of him and his experience with Unified Sports, because we all have these defining moments in life, and, you know, I feel like, you know, like I said earlier, not all of us are lucky to have those kind of defining moments, when you, you're getting them from helping people in that way. And then, I feel that with central office, reaching out to the teachers, that was a really good step. Because employees want to be heard and feel like they're being understood. And I feel like we're trying to move in a positive direction, and the teachers want to feel valued. Because I can say that I like the Enfield School District, and I've chosen to keep my kids in the Enfield School District and ran for the Board of Ed because a lot of teachers have made a lot of positive differences in my kids' lives. I'm not going to say every school year was perfect for every single one of my kids, but when I look back, there was always many more positives than there were negatives. And it's... I have the teachers to thank for that because they're very selfless in the time they put in. Now, I know you were saying that you would want something, you know, you... What does the board say? Like, what would we say? Why are we doing this? And not too long after I got elected the first time, I saw this saying. And this saying stays with me. Because we all know that this job isn't easy for us, and we spend time away from our families, and we go to meetings. But one of the things that I saw and it said, I didn't say it would be easy, but I did say it would be worth it. So, if I had to pick something for myself, that's what I would say. That this isn't an easy job, but I feel like everything I've gone through, as far as making really tough decisions, or just being able to be part of something so great, is all worth it. So, with that being said, that's it for me tonight.
Thank you, Ms. LeBlanc. Mr. Neville.
I had the privilege last night, along with a lot of other folks here, to go to the memorial service, the 9/11 memorial service down at the Weymouth School Firehouse. And I believe in rituals and things like that. I always have. I think they're important, and celebrations, and memorials that we have to do. It keeps it in front of us as to why we're doing things. I thought JP, Mr. Januszewski? Januszewski, okay. I'll get it right. Okay. He did a great job of being the spokesperson there and being the emcee to take us through that. And it was just so well done. And I think... And such a cross-section of the town was there, and for all the right reasons. A lot of kids were there, and I think that that was a highlight. Because, as they pointed out, a lot of these kids hadn't been born yet when this happened, okay? And, you know, even the high school kids were probably two years old or three years old and things like that. And just, it's important to put it out there. You can't forget those things. They need to be brought out, and we need to explain them and why it's important, and why we have these rituals here where we honor the people who honored us with their lives. So, I just felt the need to bring it up. And I think Tom's comments about the 12th, okay? 9/12 was a... That was the day we reunited. We'd been attacked. And we hadn't been attacked since Pearl Harbor, I think. And we were attacked, and all of us were attacked. Not one, just those people there in New York, or Washington, or Pennsylvania, whatever. And we did come together. And we have to come together. We get involved in these crazy squabbles in this world, particularly in politics sometimes, and just say, "God, you know, what's really important?" And those things are important. This stuff is important. What we do for kids is important, you know? Going back to it, Tina said, "You know, there is no good reason to do what we do on this board here unless we want to make a difference with kids." There's absolutely... You know, the work you do, you keep hitting yourself in the head every time you run and say, "Why am I doing this again?", you know? And it's that reason, okay? And we got to keep that right out here. So... But picking up also, I'm going with Chris, and I think, you know, like Tina, I'm sure the rest of the people will say it too. There's so many good things that go on in this district. There's so many things that, you know... I used to have a sign in my office that was one of those big posts, like, "No smoking, no whining." Remember that, Andy? Anybody can whine, but not everybody can make a difference. And if you look at the positive things out there that our kids do on a daily basis... And when I was a principal, when I had a bad day, I used to go into that class there and sit down and just say, "This is why we're here. That's the important stuff here." And I got to... It would remind me that that's why I get into this thing. So, I'd like to have us concentrate on the positive, okay? I know we don't have the resources to publish it. We always talk about that kind of stuff. We don't have that. But darn it, can't we just highlight the positive things that kids do every day? And if kids make a mistake, that's a learning experience most times. That's not necessarily negative. I learn more from the mistakes I made than I did from the accomplishments I had. And I think we have to highlight the positive. And I appreciate you taking the lead as your first... When your first moves here in office, you and Andy doing that. Let's highlight the positive. Let's get out those things to people. Let's... You know, when people say, "This is a rotten school," says, "That's not true. That's just categorically not true. We all know that because we see it every day." And let's say, "No, that's... You're wrong." And then, let's highlight what's good about it. Because our kids are really, really good. They do well. And I don't want to go through another period of time where we just whine and carry on and say, "Things are awful." They're not awful. What happened in 9/11 is awful, okay? What happens in a school system when kids are learning and all that stuff, that's good stuff. And it's positive stuff, and we need to deal with that. So, enough preaching. Basically, I was talking about, "Welcome back to school." But I was going to ask you guys some questions. I think you kind of answered some of them. You may not be able to answer them because of Power School. But I like the idea of your attendance on the first day. I like... I really liked that. I thought that was really, really positive. And, you know, I remember having to chase around a lot of kids the first day to find out where the heck they were, but I thought that was really, really good. How did that go? How did that initiative go? And you already told us how the opening was. And to go along with that, you can answer in the same sentence, you know, "How did our numbers look?" Or can you give them, okay, at this point? And will we be getting updated numbers at all levels between now and our official count on October 1? Through the chair, through the superintendent. That's okay.
Mr. Dreszek, go ahead. We don't have the first draft just yet, but we are working on it.
Okay. How about that... The first day stuff? How'd that go? The teachers respond to that? And the parents?
The reaction I got was all positive, even from comments I've gotten from kids. And if you've been, particularly at the high school, if you went through the high school and saw the giant posters floating around, the kids all enjoyed it, so... And didn't get it at first, and they realized, "They're talking about us. We need to be here."
Okay. Okay. Next one's a little bit long, and I don't usually have long things, but this one is because I was... I went to the Kite meeting, the first Kite meeting. And Walter couldn't go. He's usually our representative there, and he does a great job. But I went to it at Stowe... What, last Wednesday, I think, Walter? And I'm not going to take you through the minutes and all the stuff that went on there. They're online, and if you want to look at them, they're certainly worth reading. But there was one thing that came up, one initiative they were talking about that I think we should... That was discussed, and I think we should bring it up. Kite has a subcommittee called the PEP Committee. You guys remember that? We had them come up here maybe a year ago. And Lorena Cisneros was up here. And a neat group of people, and they had gone to us, I think they went to the town council as well, to talk about what they were trying to do for the community. The PEP Committee stands for People Empowering People. And I believe... Well, their leader is Lorena Cisneros, who also works for us and kind of right down the hall from you, Chris, I believe. She works in the business department, right? Okay. "They try to identify problems in the community and find solutions to solve them. This year, they heard from some of our non-English speaking parents who approached them about the problem of filling out all the school forms that all students bring home the first day of school. It's hard enough filling out these forms when you read and write English." The solution was to... I never had to worry about it because I had my wife do it, so, you know... And they are difficult to fill out for, in our case, for four kids. But their solution was to provide an opportunity for Spanish-speaking parents to meet with bilingual parents who would assist them in the process. They had their first meeting last night. I don't know if you knew that. I think they had it down at Social Services. And they had about a dozen parents who signed up. As I sat in the meeting, I kept thinking to myself, we're asking... We're saying to these parents coming in the door, saying, "Welcome to the Enfield Public Schools." And the first thing we do is we give them a packet of forms to fill out in a language they don't understand. That's not really quite a welcome, in my mind. And it puts a lot of stress on them and on their families. PEP came up with a good idea, and they laid the groundwork this year. So, I thought it was such a great idea that perhaps the board could support it for next year. With the administration's help, perhaps we can make it part of our opening school procedures and have it go through all schools. I know they came to you, and I think you brought it out, the principals' meeting, but, you know, it only dealt with Spanish. It didn't deal with Arabic. It didn't deal with some of the other languages that are spoken by many members of our population. So, anyway, I told Lorena that I would volunteer to help her to expand this. And I hope you don't mind, Chris, but I suggested she go see you, because she's right down the hall, and to seek you out, and said that I thought you might support the concept as well. So, I'd be surprised if she hadn't cornered you yet for your help. So, to the chair, I'm asking, "Would it be possible to invite Lorena to the next board meeting with her PEP group, discuss how their project worked, and how or if we as a board could help improve it with their help for next year?" Anybody have any objections to that?
I guess so.
Okay. Okay. And finally, the Kite folks asked me to invite the board, and Chris and Andy, to their annual meeting on 10/4/17. I think you guys have probably been to some of those over the years. It's a dinner meeting, and they're going to announce the location. They're just finalizing it. You'll be getting invitations. And this is kind of like one of those, like wedding things, hold a date. So, if you could put in your calendar and hold the date. I've gone to them with my wife for probably six or eight years, and they're really, really good. They always have a great speaker. They're also looking for your advice as to... Into how we can proceed, what's important in our relationship. And we have a wonderful relationship with Kite, and they worked with us forever, so I would highly recommend it. I'm going to skip the Power School thing that I had. And I think I got everything. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Neville. Ms. Thurston.
You know, I don't really... You know, I just... I want to congratulate you and Andy. I know I give you a hard time all the time, and I joke with you, but it just... It really... It really made me think. And I know from day one, since I've been sitting here, I've always told you, I have no children in the system, but for me, I'm here for those kids. And seeing the Unified Kids come up here tonight, I mean, that just... That means the world to me. And I know you and I, Tina, have talked about this. When we sit at graduation, and I think we said it this year, when we look on either side and we see the graduates, that's why we're here. To see the kids go through the system and to be so proud when they walk across that stage. And to me, that just... That means the world to me. And I'm very honored to be able to have done that for the past, what, six years? So, you guys keep up the good work.
Thank you, Ms. Thurston. Mr. Raynor.
Thank you. I had the privilege of going to Hazardville Memorial on the first day of school. And it was great to see all of the familiar faces from Nathan Hale coming into school that day. Ms. Hunter and her staff really did an incredible job unifying that school as a whole. When kids entered the door, there was no difference if they were from Hale or a returning memorial student. And that enthusiasm was just spread throughout the entire school. I had the chance to go and meet with some of the teachers before the kiddos came in. They were very excited. They had huge smiles on their faces, and they were ready for the year. I then had the privilege of standing by the door as the kids came off the bus and parents were walking their kids. And to see the first day of school jitters, everyone had them, and everyone just was flawless. Staff helped kids go where they needed to go. A lot of new faces again to the school, and they welcomed them with open arms. So, just kudos to Ms. Hunter and her staff. They did a great job at Hazardville, welcoming the kids in. And, yeah. Secondly, Mr. Dreszek, I wanted to congratulate you, well, through the chair to you, on a wonderful convocation. I did watch it. I had some popcorn and sat back and listened. My wife said, "What are you watching?" I said, "Shh, quiet. It's going to be, you know, Next Academy Awards." However, the fact that you kind of pawned off the singing to the experts, I appreciate that. But I'm hoping maybe next year, you can... They can teach you a thing or two, and you can maybe a little note for us. Who knows? So...
I delegated that to Mr. Longing.
Congratulations, guys. The whole first day of school went off without a hitch, and it's a great school year, and looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Raynor. Charlie?
Well, I want to say, "Welcome back. Happy first week of school. It's over with." And, like Rich, I got to go to Henry Barnard because that's where my son goes to school, and it was awesome. You wouldn't have been able to tell which kids were from Hale, which kids weren't from Hale. Mr. Graham did a great job. That school is already running like a well-oiled machine. You wouldn't even be able to tell it was the first day. I thought it was a couple of months in. Teachers knew where they were going. They were directing kids. It was absolutely flawless. It was great. Afterwards, after I got settled in, I got to go down into the admin wing. That's now most of the special needs areas, speech therapy, occupational therapy, physical therapy. They have an entire room that's massive and is just dedicated to children with sensory processing disorder. And any kids that need to go in and have a sensory break or whatever can go in there. It was totally, totally amazing. The special needs area is phenomenal. I'm beyond impressed with what we have to offer our kids, especially since my son is in a special needs for speech therapy. So, I have no doubt in my mind that he's going to get all the help that he needs and more than he needs. It's great. So, it was awesome. To what Mr. Neville was saying about the... Filling out the forms in the foreign languages, the... I saw a few of the PTO Facebook pages did put that up and advertised it on there, so that was helpful to get the word out. And then, the only other question that I had through the chairman to you is, do you think it would be possible that we could put a notice up on our ticker to inform the parents, you know, it's not running yet, but it's going to be in there when it is up and running for the Power School? You can like, put a notice up there so that they can see it's ready to go?
That's actually already on the website.
Oh. Well, then, there you go. That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Riley. Ms. Zungar.
Okay. Hello. Correc had their ribbon-cutting ceremony. They opened the Museum Academy over in Bloomfield, so that was something new with them. As Nuntuck has their ribbon-cutting ceremony tomorrow at the tower at 3:00 p.m. I want to congratulate all the students going back to school this week. I'm hearing a lot of great reports, and I heard so many nice things about the convocation that people just... The teachers loved it, that it was great, and it was really well done. So, I wanted to pass those kudos along because you don't always hear the good things. And I appreciated Tim, his comments about being positive and staying positive. One of my favorite quotes is, "They don't build monuments to critics." And I've learned that at a very young age. It's so true. I wanted to encourage all the parents and students to go to Rachel's Challenge on that Wednesday night that's coming up. It's just such a great program, and it's so heartwarming, and it's just such a great thing for the students. Also, I wanted to say that there was a high school class reunion, not that I was in it, Also, I wanted to say that there was a high school class reunion, not that I was in it, but it was the class of 1977. It was their 40th reunion. They had a great spread over at Grassmere Country Club, and they took up a collection for a 50/50 raffle, and half of it was going to go to Rachel's Challenge. So it was over $300. So they had this announcement on every table. And I can't remember the exact dollar amount, and I tried to get it before tonight, but I will bring that. And then the guy that won the raffle, he donated all his earnings back to Rachel's Challenge. So I thought that was really great. So I want to give kudos to the class of 1977. Tim already talked about the beautiful ceremony at the 9/11 at the firehouse on Waymouth Road. It was a great turnout, and it's always so nicely done. It's, it's good for us never to forget. And I think that's it. And I, and I love that saying that you mentioned, "We make a difference in Enfield, every child, every day." I really like that. So, and thanks for sharing all of those thoughts through the chair. Thanks for sharing all that. It was, it was lengthy, but it was well worth it, and you do it anytime you want. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Enger. Mr. Cruzel.
Well, being second to the last, she talked about what I want, he talked about what I want, he talked about what I want to do. She talked about what I want to do. So I do echo the convocation was right on, and he did get a text from me on that, too, so. But I didn't have popcorn. I had, whatever. But I do want to, we turn back to 9/12, today being 9/12. And if you remember 16 years ago, 9/12, we being, and it was mentioned last night, too, we being in the runway to Bradley here, it was eerily quiet.
Yes.
And I don't ever want that to happen again. It was scary quiet for days. Not, not only just one day, it was three, four days. We're, you know, our shop located, we, you know, we hear the planes every day, and you get used to it. And it was just quiet. So I do want to, 9/12 is just as important a day as 9/11 is, and we were unified from Washington and Hartford and everybody. We were unified, and we got work done, and we've got to bring that unification back. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Cruzel. To your point, Mr. Dreszek, to your point, Ms. LeBlanc. Something that is very similar to what you said is that nothing worthwhile is ever easy. And I don't think anybody who's ever served on the Board of Education could say that this is by far any way near easy. Usually, you anger half the town with every decision that you make. Sometimes you anger the same people over and over again regardless, no matter how good or bad the decision is. But I know that every person that I am currently serving with now is involved for the right reasons. I've been here eight years, and I agree with the statement that, that came out of your That's the motivation for doing it. That's the motivation for staying with it. That's the motivation for making it work. Now, I know eight years ago when I ran, I said I wanted to fix what was broken. Let's face it, there was a lot of stuff that was wrong. But we shined up the diamond. Have every reason to be proud of the school district here. And it, sometimes I'm impatient, and sometimes I lose it when the same folks say just, it's how bad it is. And it's not bad because it's not the truth. And give us a black eye for some silly reason. It's why we do it. It's why I've done it. And I'm very proud to be a part of this board, and I'm very proud to have you guys as my colleagues. And I will always remember these days as one of the highest points of my life. Unified sports is awesome. They always say the proof is in the pudding. Some folks will say, "Well, you know, you know, we, we're not so good here, and we're not so good here." And then the championship starts happening, and the awards start happening, and the independent evaluators come out and they say, "Well, contrary to what was said, this is what's really going on." Great job on your convocation. We, as a board, decided four years ago, we were going to change the attitude. We were going to change the direction. We were going to change the culture when it came to the folks that are vested in this school system. We did it. It's been a long way, but we've done it. And you just continue the tradition, Mr. Dreszek, and I'm very proud of you and your job that you did. I remember when I first signed on to the board, there were quite a few employees who weren't happy to be here. And from what I can tell, and from what I've been told, there's a lot more employees that actually like working here now that, that were strained, and we'll say that they were strained. And they've stepped up to the plate when they needed to, and we have great people. It's one thing I've always had faith in was the people that work for us, the people that work in the district, the people that, I always had faith in their ability, just like I have faith in the ability of the folks that live here. Never lost it, and it's a positive thing, and we should never lose it. Congratulations on that $100,000 grant. I think that's always nice to hear that we get a big chunk of change to help us on one of the board's goals, and again, shining up that diamond, showing again, no, our, our people do what they're supposed to do, and, and they're dedicated to it, and they're doing it for the right reasons. I have to say that from, from what I could, from the reports that I've gotten, this is probably one of the smoothest-running first days of school that we've had in a very long time. While there were some pretty interesting curveballs thrown your guys' way, you guys handled it in a very incredibly professional manner. God bless you. Again, you guys, this is why we have faith in you, because you guys always manage to pull it off no matter what happens. And that's why we back you so strongly. The Special Education Center that we have over at Barnard, you guys did a homerun. And it was a vision that we had a long time ago. We finally made it real. And, and, and again, it's just, change is difficult for people, and I understand it changes hard. But when the changes are for the right reasons, then that's, that's awesome. You also had a very good appearance in the newspaper, Mr. Dreszek, where, where you explained the exact cost of moving from, from Alco, from Barnard to Alcorn. And I'm proud to say that it was a little, right around $10,000 actual additional cost plus labor. So you guys, again, have a little faith when, when we present numbers and guess at numbers. Some of us have been doing this for a little while, especially when the administration adamantly says, "This is what it's going to be." So God, thank you. Thank you for not having egg on our face. Interesting, the legislative delegation has been invited to be here. They were supposed to be here this meeting. The governor, although he received, the governor's office received a phone call from me and an email from me. I have yet to hear from them. I don't think Kathy has heard from them yet, so I think they're blowing us off. But our legislative delegation agreed to, they were supposed to be here tonight, but they're going to be here at the next Board of Ed meeting because they feel they have more information to talk about with regards to where we're at with the budget. I know it's still kind of in the way, and I agreed with them and said, "You know what? Yeah, when you have better answers, instead of saying we don't know what's going on, it'd probably be the best deal." So to keep you guys posted, that's what's going on. I'm kind of disappointed that the governor didn't show up, but I really didn't think he was going to. I, I, now, I, I know we've all been positive, but I, and it's usually my role to play Darth Vader, so I'm going to be a little bit on the Darth Vader side right now. I am always perplexed. Back in, I think it was the late '70s, early '80s, there was a contract that was dealt between the school systems and the state with regards to the teachers' pensions. Because rural communities couldn't afford to pay increased salaries, they, they, they were, the burden of the, of the school, that's teachers' pensions was removed from the localities, and we were introduced to binding arbitration. It was allowing this, the rural districts who couldn't afford to do both, to elevate the teacher's salaries to where they should have been, and, and the state was to handle the pension problem. Well, the, the reason we have a pension problem is because the state has mishandled the pensions. We, it's one of the, they had to borrow money to bring the teachers' pensions, I believe, to half-funded, or they're almost half-funded, a little over half-funded, and the rest of the pensions left in the state are grossly underfunded, and I believe we are the worst state in the union for our pension liabilities as a whole. That is a misappropriation of money that should have been spent in where it's supposed to be, and now they're passing on to us. I'm a little reluctant to accept it, and I don't understand. I think it's a political cowardice to do it that way, but that's just me.
Just a point of information. I think we're kind of straying into an area that we should not go in.
But it has direct impact on us as a board and our budget, and that's why I'm a little upset about it.
I understand that. I would provide data on, I mean, we're not as good as we should be, but we're not the lowest. We should have data. I don't think we should.
Also, not to, not, not to cause any problems. A few years back, we had a review and an update of our school security policies. And these policies codify, re-codified certain practices that we have as a school district, and the only reason that I'm addressing is I've had a few complaints. In order to come to visit a school, you have to have a child in the school or have to have a very good reason with regards to school business to be there. There's no exceptions to that rule. That's, that's, everyone signed on to it. That's my understanding what the policy still stands today. Although, you know, things like basketball games and hockey games and stuff like that, that works. You have a child there, great. You have a reason to be there, great. But because of the safety and security of our children, we've kind of restricted that. Regardless of who you are, regardless of, it's supposed to be limited to parents and board members and school officials. Without, if you can't, you have a reason to be there, then you get permission from the superintendent. It's not like something that you can hop and just go visiting. Just, there was some complaints from, that I've received, and I just figured I'd point it out, and it is our school policy that you have to have a reason to be there. It is what it is. Just pointing it out again. Congratulations on a great first day of school. Congratulations on a really, really, really impressive school year so far. And again, the unified sports and all of our kids. You guys continuously make us proud, and, and we're very blessed to have you as our, living in our town. Moving on, unfinished business.
There's none.
None. New business. Enfield High School Safe Grad contribution for the class of 2018, Mr. Dreszek.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll make it quick. Every year, the board makes a contribution to Safe Grad. This is an opportunity for the board to do the same that they've always, that they've always done. It's a $1,000 donation, and try to permit you to do it.
Okay, no, that's fine.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Neville, seconded by Ms. Thurston, and it's to allocate $1,000 to Safe Grad?
Correct.
Any discussion? Sensing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Benier?
Yes.
Mrs. Riley?
Yes.
Mrs. Enger?
Yes.
Mr. Cruzel?
Yes.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mr. Neville?
Yes.
Mrs. Thurston?
Yes.
Chairman Serrart?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Board committee reports. Building committee.
No report.
We have a meeting on?
We have a meeting next Thursday.
Thursday, and the only request we've had is to deal with, they wanted to know if they had bike racks that were in the budget for that, and nothing has come up in my tenure there, and we'll, we're going to bring it up.
We'll bring it up at the meeting.
At the meeting. I'm glad the kids are using bikes, if that's what's happening. I'm sure we can deal with that. I'm not sure how much money is there, but we'll bring it up.
There, there's a question about the stoplight still, and we're going to, we're going to bring that back up again, too.
Yeah.
The last was that the representative was supposed to go through the council, and I didn't hear anything, so we'll bring that up Thursday night.
Is that it?
Yep.
Curriculum committee.
We're meeting on the 20th.
Finance committee.
No, no meeting until next week.
Leadership committee, nothing to discuss. Policy committee.
Mr. Longy is hosting the policy committee at Alcorn tomorrow at 6:00. Last I heard, he's bringing burgers and dogs, so it should be one heck of a meeting. We're going to be discussing the 9,000 series and updating that according to the Cabe recommendations.
Sweet.
I like ketchup.
Any other committees that are standing?
Facilities. They postponed our meeting until after the election, so I think it's, what did I tell you last night, Walter? Was it November?
November 12th or something.
Something like that, 13, something like that. It's, but it's after the election.
Anything else? Any other committees?
Can I just ask about that?
Yeah, go ahead.
Since we're talking about facilities, just kind of a question that I had brought up at the JFK meeting, you know, if you guys are, I, I thought it would be appropriate that you guys would be discussing the PCBs in order for you guys to come back to your respective boards to possibly update us on anything new that you might have found. So just like a point of order, a word of note, I guess, when it comes to the facilities. But now we're not even going to meet, you guys aren't meeting until?
No.
At least the middle of November. Okay.
I mean, the bottom line with the PCBs is that once they were found as part of, you know, getting ready for the, for the pre-ref, they had to notify the EPA, DEEP, and all these, and they, and they have to, they're coming up with a plan right now. No matter what happens, that plan has to be carried out.
Right.
Because I've had parents call me as well and say, "What's going on?" And I've sent out copies of what we got.
Yes, right, right.
Okay, and people have appreciated that, but that has to be done. There's no question. And what I heard, I think from the mayor at, at that meeting, is that they would have to go do another referendum for 1.6 or 1.4, something like that, whatever that cost was. And, but it has to be done. If it doesn't get a proven referendum, my understanding is that it would have to come out of tax, tax increases. So it has to be done. It cannot go away.